I've called an order this August 8 review session. Madam President, may we have a roll call?
President Goodline.
Here.
Mr. Sampson.
Here.
Mr. Sampson. This week.
President.
Dr. Vieg.
President.
Serena.
President.
Mr. Casey.
Here.
So, President.
Please stand up, please, and leave it.
The state of the area, this is a republic, which stands one nation. End of this law with liberty to us as a scroll.
Dr. Lawrence, I see they have two presentations today. Go ahead and bring your first.
We do OST additional due more than part are getting counted according to Cessna. More on that.
Good evening, Board President, President Goodline, Superintendent Lawrence and Board members. Thank you for having me here this evening to present our 22-23 performance on Ohio State tests. Now, I do want to preface this with, this is not public data yet, so somebody if I that this is not not given on a state level. To lead this information that we're making instructional decisions on. So we're going to discuss Ohio State tests in third through sixth grade. Students take ELA, math, and science in fifth grade only. In seventh and eighth grade, students take ELA, math, and science in eighth grade only. At high school levels, students take Algebra I, Geometry, American Government, American History, Biology, and English Language Arts II. Previously, students also took emotionalism and those. We'll also talk a little bit about graduation rate and discipline or suspension rates. So in 22-23, our district performance, we had seven percent of our students who were untested. A lot of them at a district level, with most of those occurring at the high school level. There was also a large number in the old school, but largest percentage of them were in high school. And then, and then over 50% of our students scored in the level two. And then we had almost 20% in basic, 30% in proficient, 6% in accomplished, 2% in advanced, and half a million percent, I'm sorry, less than half a million percent in advanced schools. So I drew things by pretty fast, just kind of looking at where kids are in school and how schools are generally shaped. So in third, third, sixth grade, this really just kind of tells a story over time about our school's performance from 2018, 19, all the way to 22-23. And I did include the COVID years, just so that you can see what happened during the COVID years. You will see in third through sixth grade math, there are no scores for the 19, 20 school year, and that's because we weren't tested. As well in seventh and eighth grade, ELA and math. Yes?
Just real quickly, did we have any changes in the test assessments during this time period on the science, wanted to see for our records?
Yes, there was changes in which assessment was in those.
Okay, thank you.
So, so you can see how the performance changed through the years. Looking at initially in 2018, performance was about 30%, just as a point because the scrap does only go up to 40%, where the chart only goes up to 40% performance. So in 2018, 2019, those were our highest levels of achievement on average across the grade levels. Now, there are schools and there are places in grade levels where that is different. However, as an average for the district, that is where we were performing in 2018, 2019. And in 22-23, our greatest level of performance was really in that third, third, sixth grade level. Our growth was shown in the third, sixth grade. Our high school kind of stayed flat performance, grew slightly, but really stayed flat overall. So, let's see if you can imagine that. If you look at just our high school individual tests and proficiency, individual tests at the high school level over time dropped, except in Ameri- in US history, American history. Or, and so that change column is really only referencing from 21, 22 to 22, 23. All right. So, K3 literacy. All right. So in K3 literacy, one of the things we do is our students, when they're in kindergarten, they take the KRA, and that measures their, it's the kindergarten readiness assessment, KRA. And so students take that assessment. They also take devils in K3 to assess where they are. And so, K3 literacy, kindergartens are assessed from the first 20 days. First through third graders are generally assessed by September, October. We try and assess students before that. And so that is what measures, because, I don't know if you see here, it says kindergarten diagnostic, first grade diagnostic, so that's looking at that change. Did we move kids who were assessed in kindergarten to being on track in first grade only when they were assessed? So that's that kindergarten to first grade assessment. And then from the first grade to the second grade, the second to the third grade, and then the third grade to that, to the third grade ELA test. And so historically, our movement in kids, or the movement that we reported, has been in, in that third grade to the third grade test. And I use that language that we reported because I don't know that we are reporting that accurately because I just assumed this role, and so that's one of those areas I'll need to dig into more, is was that information reported accurately? That, the movement of kid of those of K3. But as this shows, initially, it's approximately 9% of our students who we are documenting moving to official. 2018 was the only year that we documented students initially in that move. And so that's why I say that it is something that we need to examine how we're documenting because all of that comes through one of the departments that I actually supervise. And so that, that's one of my tasks, is to work on my part. But also to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing to serve kids. All right. Four-year graduation rate. So, over the, I guess, really the last five years, our four-year graduation rate has dipped a little bit. Part of that's due to COVID, in part because, so in class of 2020, we had that rise whenever we were given some latitude with the graduation requirements for testing. In 21, 22, and 23, we now kind of settled as those graduation requirements have, have now finally settled themselves because the new graduation requirements. Aaron, you may ask, help me on this one. The new graduation requirements requiring the career activities, or I guess the options to show competency, and making sure that it is more than just students earning points. Because initially, in the course of this, it was students had to earn so many points on their Ohio State tests, and now it's showing competency and then having career and workforce rate. So discipline across the district, and this is addressing specifically suspensions. Suspensions across the district since 2018, 2019, in K3 have decreased significantly. There was legislation that supported that decrease. In 4 and 6, also a significant decrease. In 7 and 8, a significant increase in suspensions. So inviting is something that we need to address. In 9 and 12 as well, a significant increase. And so, this is, that was a percent change since 2018, 2019, and I did not do it as a change in prior years because of the interruption between, in 1920, that was an interrupted year. 2021, everybody was kind of coming back. So I was trying to take years that were the most aligned and try and communicate with data consistent and taking information that's similar. So, what questions can I answer?
Thank you for the presentation. I was a, thank the job that I was. All right, we're, oh, more member ladies and more for Dr. Vieg.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. The first was on like, like, well, pretty much it has to do with all the total presentation. The second slide, okay. This, or the second, not the second slide, I'm sorry, the second graph. It shows a five-year period. And, and yeah, it gives a picture of a pre-COVID, murder, the level, and then the drop. And that, but in my, my memory of how we compared to other districts, especially other urban districts, we did not drop as far as they did in general. Is that?
So that does sound correct. I have a document that I could reference and give back to you about that, but I just don't have it.
And that just, and that kind of goes to my point, and actually, a lot of this, if you look at it in an isolated district, it really isn't that meaningful to me, especially because you have to, it needs to be compared to other districts and in other schools and stuff like that. So it is much more, it is, it is much more telling when it's told relative to other schools because if you look at the urban districts, is that right?
The urban eight.
The urban eight, yeah, okay. If you look at the chart of, I mean, I have a chart, and I brought it here to show you just for my point, it, that shows the urban eight, a chart of their proficiency score over, over a period of, since the beginning of proficiency score, like 23 years. And it just does this. And basically, it's all eight are in the same dance. They're all within a few points of each other, going up, going down, and up in the same dance. And so, yeah, so if there's improvement relative to other districts, that's what's telling. So that's, that's really about the only other point. Another point, when, when we talk about third grade, we, myself and my colleague, Mr. Sampson, we had a lot of talking today, and there was people that administered today, and there was some confusion about the third grade guarantee. And there were people that did not understand that the third grade guarantee was repealed for 22, 23.
Right.
And then for 20, and then we had to, I had to go home and look up what it is for 23, 24. My understanding is, and I'm reading the OEP, the Ohio, and this is pretty important, the third grade. According, like, it's, it's in a fact, but there's a very, very big exception to the rule, and that is if your parent wants you to go ahead and you go on to the fourth grade, you go on to the fourth grade. So that, to me, that makes it affect, it affects all. In fact, it's basically the third grade guarantee is effectively repealed for 23, 24. But that's, that, those are my few points. Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, I just kind of want to lower a little more what more member ladies said. I think looking at the second slide, which is like the first, at the performance data, it would be very helpful if I see this bell curve and how, I would like to know how these fare statewide, and if we know, and when we get the, the result, there's comparables, like how do we fare compared to the state, and how do we compare to districts that are similar size? So, yeah, definitely.
I can get that for you.
Yeah, so the, the story is not.
Okay. Any other questions? I will let it go. Thank you again for the presentation, and my question is more so internally, because yes, I would like to see how we compare to other places, but I also want to know, what are our plans to probably go up some in this next school year? To improve? To improve, yes. Like, what, what are we doing this, or where are we trying to impact to see, like, I see in, although, I mean, I think I may just come to the past, we're not even at 50%, we're still getting apps across the board here. Just what's our plan, what's the problem? What we got?
I think it's the next presentation.
Okay.
I guess. So, set it up that way. And also, the data was not to, in any way, shape, or sort of form, kind of tell a story. It was kind of just saying, this is where we are, and this current team is here. We want to say this is where we started, and then next year, at this point, we'll have this data, and we'll say this is where we're relative, where we're towards the district. Yes, I think other districts should be part of that data compilation as well, and get that where Cleveland, Cincinnati have not recovered to pre-COVID results, and that their scores were significantly worse than dates over that span. So yes, there are those districts in Ohio, they go right about that now. But for us today, it's just to set a baseline, and say, this is where we were today, and hopefully we'll be back, make sure the score is a little better.
Right, just went ahead and mentioned the second six, what about high school? Level coverage, will you come?
There'll be another presentation. T6 and then 7.
Can you just give us a, talk to me a little bit about what we got from the board?
Really, the bare bones of what you see there, anytime you want to have rapid adjust, rapid more increases, it's really about final training supervision and fidelity. Making sure that whatever curriculum you're using, whatever instruction or strategy you're that you're doing on a consistent basis, and that is part of team effort. It's one of the things, reasons we keep talking about central office transformation. It's a really big team out there today. There are, out in the support, those will be the people that are in buildings helping support teachers and principals, make sure we're actually doing what we're supposed to do every day. That's where the biggest breakdown is, in schools across the country, the gap, we call it fidelity gap, knowing doing gap, where you're just not doing what you say you want to do.
Any other questions? Board members.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate you giving this, and I do look at it, I think where we are, I appreciate having just kind of where we are, just where we are, bare bones where we are. I think one thing that I would like to see, and talked about it a little bit before, seeing how this breaks out and stratifying across the district, and that's what I think we can look at. We want to see how we improve, look at where are some of our greatest deficiencies are, how much relates with, how does it relate to the suspension data? If I'm looking at a child who missed X amount of days, what does that look like compared to a student? If I look at a child who comes from different situations. I think also, one thing that we have to remember when we look at our district is that when we talk about the urban eight, I almost feel like it's a misnomer because we're really not in a group. I mean, we're a district of around 12,000 students on a good day, and we're talking about urban eight, we're looking at Columbus, it's closer to 40, Cleveland's closer to 40,000. Even Akron and Toledo are above 20,000. So we're talking about districts that are sometimes three times as big as ours, twice the size of ours. And then also, we don't put into that consideration when we look at urban eight, that our district has had a hit from charters that other districts done. And so I think looking at that as well, because, you know, talk to enrollment and talk to a lot of our teachers, and they know that come January, February, and believe that second, that one second semester, we then did kids who are coming back, or coming over from charter schools. And so that plays a part too. So I think looking at that, I think even looking to me, looking at the dignity, and I think not just the dignity of public schools, but looking at how it affects, is what are the, the scores for students who come to our school after the first quarter, come after the second quarter? We have kids, you know, I talked to a roadie last year, we still have kids coming in the fourth quarter of school year. So I think looking and breaking apart that, because I think, I like looking at how we are compared to other districts, but I also realize that we're not like other districts. You know, we were the hub of charter schools. So we look at our district, and even though we might compare citywide population of the districts, their public school districts are still the majority of the students in their cities. And so I think we have to be mindful of that and then think of how do we strategize with that? How do we give children that extra, you know, a child may leave our district second grade, come back fourth grade, and they're still on that secondary level, because they might have jumped around into charter schools, or they might have been out of it. And so now you throw COVID in the mix of that as well, and saying a child who wasn't in our district when we weren't actively trying to get distance learning in because of COVID, children who weren't in our district, and didn't have that going on. So now they're coming, and they're coming two, three grade levels behind at times. And so understanding that would be very helpful to me to look at that. And so I think, even as a district, just to say, all right, if we're looking at how do we raise these numbers, let's really look at why we're here, and look at some of the external factors that really play a part of it, because I think we have that piece that a lot of our urban partners don't have when we talk about the city of data and the state of education today. I appreciate that.
I will work on any of your information. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. I'm next for the session.
Good luck with this, we're going to use this data, and we have. She knows, she knows, she knows, she's grown up. She will give the call every time around, but yes.
Good evening, President Goodline, Board members, Dr. Lawrence, and Chair Dr. Armho. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. And Judy Scolop, ensure to well.
I'm really alone, it's been a very much for allowing us opportunity.
Today, we're going to talk about our three areas. We're going to talk about our academic framework for each grade level, K3 sets, instruction, and professional learning and development. When we talk to principals in preparing for this school year, they kind of have a framework from us in relation to the academic sections for every grade level, to kind of like give them a guide for this school year in planning for some, for their scheduling, but also for instruction. So this is a sample. This sample, we've done it for every grade level, but this is a sample inside and in space. It's focusing on the Department of Education guidelines and Ohio Advice Code, and also House Bill 110. And then also, social, emotional needs, equity, and community building within the buildings. So when you look at this, it takes and breaks down our school day and every component of that school day, but gives flexibility and focus on instruction. When you look at Ohio Advice Code, it says that students in youth grades should have five hours of instruction. When you look at our model, it's 5.75 hours of instruction, but it also gives us some extra time in there to add what's needed based on the needs and the data of the building. So when you break it down, you can have to see all the areas. We really focused, at every grade level, focusing on ELA, small group instructions and centers, our writing, and then our wordwork influencing. And you can see that's a large portion of our day because that is where we are learning to read. So when we look at kindergarten and first grade, it's learning how to read, and then we're transitioning to learning to read and reading to learn, and using our text. Then we go into our math foundations and literacy, and workshop in summers, that's 90 minutes. And then we have a special study of science. We also have our unified arts, which hopefully. And then we have a 30-minute area for every grade level, it's a little different focus. We have the opportunity for buildings to go in a more needed classroom, to develop some social, emotional learning work, if you need some additional time to add, and maybe a focus in STEM, but also some time for transitions and for rest for these, that's very important if you ever have little ones. And then also time for just so much breaks in our school day.
So looking at co-teaching, we've talked about that before. Co-teaching is a collaborative approach to instruction in which two teachers work together to plan and then implement high-quality, standard-based instructions for all students in their class. So that's the definition of co-teaching. Then we looked at a great deal of research. So urban school districts research has determined the following effects for co-teaching. Improved student outcomes, increased teacher collaboration, positive impact on classroom management, enhanced inclusion and equity, positive teacher and student experiences, and impact on school climate and culture. In another research study, we found that all learners can benefit from additional resources and support. It's increased one-on-one interaction between teachers and students, having this co-teaching model. Students receive personalized instruction. Teachers create stronger, more inventive lessons focused on student outcomes. Co-teaching increases professional growth in all subject areas.
As we start this new school year, we're really focused on some professional development. And so this week, in going into this new school year, we look at PD for our new science adoption, K12, co-teaching PD for grades one through three, TeachTown, which is that OEC program that was mentioned in the last meeting for 4 through 12, and the specialized units. Principal creative curriculum, EL training, equity, and professional learning communities. And then specifically, we're really pushing for buildings to have specific-based PD based on their needs and their data. And this week, this is just some examples that I've seen, because we had principal retreats this week, and school retreats with their staff, and also in planning for the opening school year. So we've seen climate and culture surrounding social, emotional learning, cultural responsive instruction and equity, implicit bias training, and then a lot of restorative practices. But that culture is really important, because you know the climate, and then the culture comes when you have a strong climate. And then instructional practices that I've seen this week is inter-based instruction, assessments, data analysis, literacy, and STEM. Yeah, we, we had talked, we had a little slide in there talking about some new opportunities for math and for pathways. Could you talk a little bit about that?
So we're implementing an element in the whole school where we have instructors that's going to be. So we're implementing an element in middle school where we have instructors that's going to be doing a virtual class for pre-algebra students selected from various schools so that they can all get that benefit. And also an algebra one, because pre-algebra and algebra are so important for their future development math. So another virtual class on algebra for those students. And then there are some pathways created between Dunbar and Thurgood Marshall as well to benefit the students.
Thank you guys. Any questions? Go ahead, go ahead, relax.
Okay, start off again. Uh, and then, um, referencing our, hold on, with the, the, uh, Mr. Sampson and I, that was a few teachers. Um, it was very nice to see the schedule, although not really scheduled, it's basically just, um...
The framework.
Yeah, framework, but okay. Um, it would be nice to see how it compares to the current, or to the previous year.
Certainly, we can pull that.
Yeah. And this is just third grade, and that's fine.
We were just giving example, but we can provide this both for all the grade levels and hand you off six if the board would like.
And then, going off also on the discussion with the teachers, their problems with previous, their biggest problem with the previous framework in schools with different teachers, um, was, uh, the amount of time. And, and you remember the term off-ranch, am I kind of incorrect?
Yes.
They were, they had to go off-ranch because they didn't have enough time in the day to get to all the different places. And so, so I'm, with this, okay, I'm assuming that this, this new framework has two new daily thirty-minute instruction pieces, or at least two for, for social studies and science.
That's curious. And it was saying that, um, the conversation was that teachers felt there needed to be more time for ELA because there's so many components to it, and this new schedule addresses that as well.
I mean, I, maybe I, I heard it wrong, but my, I just, it just seemed like they didn't have time to get that everything. And I, and I, I, I would wonder that, um, yeah, and although they, the hours were cut, adding two courses, I, or two whole different courses, I, I don't know how that would help. That actually sounds like it might make it a little bit more difficult to get through the day.
So when you see the previous schedule, I think that you put them side to side, and you'll see that it was a block for ELA, a block for math. And then in the afternoon, the groups flipped, and again, it was another block for ELA and another block for math.
And then also, the, the problems that, moving on, the, the problems, um, with co-teaching versus dual teaching, or, or the problem with, with, with dual teaching. And this was from multiple teachers too. The biggest problem was when you get paired with a teacher that either you don't get along with or has a different teaching style, or, or there, or there's some, there's some problems with, with their, with how they're working together. And how does co-teaching address that problem?
Certainly, so, um, the group of teachers that we met talked about those issues, really making sure that those, um, teams were really, were then working together. And a lot of issues were near one and two as we were kind of figuring that out. But when you look at that climate and culture piece and making sure that they had input in, in selecting their partners, but also making sure there's time for team building, that's critical. Anytime you do work with somebody new, um, building in that, that, uh, team building. And so part of the PD that we are doing on Thursday discusses that. What happens if this happens? And how do we develop strong teams, um, and collaborate in making decisions and working together? It's a collaborative process. When you look at co-teaching, it's planning together and working together. Instead of, I'm planning mine in this side of the room, and I'm planning mine in this side of the room, and they're each doing their own thing at the same time. And that's very, that's very different than collaborative planning and working together.
Okay, we'll collaborate. And then, okay, then of course, um, the, the new framework takes out mind-play, success maker.
So if you look at, at that new framework, it talks about times for summers and it's time for work. So that could be a moment where a student, the teacher felt that mind-play or success maker was needed for that student. Part of that center work could be a piece of mind play or success maker based on the needs and the data.
So we're continuing with mind-play?
Yes.
Have we paid for it?
We will. At all.
And, and I'm just to go forward, I mean, the problem, and, and only, really, I think only one teacher had a problem with mind-play. I didn't hear a problem with success maker. The problem was, um, when mind-play would move on to, and, and I guess in third grade, the, the, um, the example given was, uh, when it moved on to adverbs. And the students weren't ready for adverbs, or, or really her lesson, they had not been in her lesson plan as of yet. And I really respect the teacher that they had that problem, and I respect her, her lesson plan. But mind-play is, is built differently. It's a program, the mind-play program pretty much, I think, or I'm pretty, this is how it works after talking to the vendor. Um, it, it asks those kids a lot of questions. And it pretty much determines that individually, per kid, this kid is done with these other things. They're just ready to move on to adverbs. And so that is how these, these programs work. There are programs that, that work like, like just a regular teacher's lesson plans that teaches every single kid the same thing and doesn't move on to the next thing until everybody's ready. And we don't use those programs for, I think, a good reason. Um, this is a very diverse district. We have, I mean, it's an urban district, and we have a lot of the diversity that Columbus has and other major districts have. And in a diverse district, I think, having programs like mind-play and success maker that actually work individually.
Look, the record shows the Board of Education of the Bay City School District, they just completed an executive session for which they considered the appointment, employment dismissal of employees, and conferred with an attorney involved in pending or imminent court action. I'm moving exit executive session.
Second.
I moved it, sorry.
Sir, I apologize.
Dr. Goodwin moved it, Mr. Lacy said.
I did it just to make sure that it got through.
Okay.
What can I say?
I moved it, and Joe Lacy said it.
Okay.
Okay? All right, any questions? See none, then we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pigott?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
She is excused for the rest of the meeting.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. I moved that we suspend our motion to, no, I'm sorry, I moved that we suspend our procedures for reconsideration for this one meeting to vote on item sixteen on the forty-eight, forty-eight hour waiver pool. H R D.
So.
I moved it.
Second.
It is moved and promptly seconded. Are there any questions?
Aye, aye. Mr. Sampson?
I put the motion into wait. That being so.
And then the motion was suspension of the rules.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we go.
So we're, we're just placing the rules.
Correct. No, just schedules. All right, any other questions? See none, then we have a vote.
Expanding the grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pigott?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right. Thank you. There are a motion for the H R D.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and promptly seconded. Reminder, we are voting on, on H R D forty-eight hour waiver, number sixteen. Are there any questions? See none, then we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pigott?
I stand.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Five yeses, one I stand.
All right, thank you. Resolution to adopt board policy first reading. In so light that the Board of Education is committed to the continuum of various policies, rules and regulations, manual, and the committee, which was appointed, has been worked with or then go. The following are being brought at this time for a first reading. Complaints from the Board filed B F C policy adoption. Now, therefore, we adopt the case of the Bay City School District, Mississippi County, Ohio, hereby except and adopt the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook, policies, rules, and regulations. B G, Board Staff Communication, C C, Administration and Organization Plan, B F E, B slash B, B F E A, Gates and Receipts and Admissions slash Free Admission, G E D, Board Staff Communication, I G D F, Student Fundraising Activities, I G D J, Inter-Space Athletic Athletics, and to determine Whistle Global Protection. These policies are being reviewed for the first time. As much as motion seconded is not required, these policies will be available in superintendent's office to review and comment prior to the accepted reading in the draft by the Board of Education. Furthermore, the policies will be reviewed by the superintendent's office. The Board Office is a legal department of the day open to schools prior to the second reading. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Move by Board of Education, second by Dr. Pigott. Any questions? See none, then we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Miss Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Pigott?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Hope we have a good present to you guys. Flashing education tomorrow morning, competition tomorrow morning. Missed all that. There are no comments written over that.